Morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start the meeting in a moment. If anybody would like to address the board, please fill out a card and give your card to the clerk. Good morning, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners zoning hearing for Thursday, February 24th, in the Board of County Commissioners chamber. I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner, would you please do the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. And in lieu of a prayer, we, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to have everybody in this chamber pray for Taylor County Deputy Troy Anderson, who was shot three times during a traffic stop on U.S. Highway 19 South around 10:00 p.m. on February 22nd. Deputy Anderson was flown by helicopter to UF Health Hospital, where he's currently being treated for gunshot wound to his jaw, neck, and hand. Our thoughts and prayers are with Deputy Anderson and his family, as well as Taylor County Sheriff's Office, as they support their loved one and coworker. And in addition to this moment of silence, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make a comment about the escalating situation in Ukraine, and that we, on behalf of Palm Beach County, hold the citizens of Ukraine and Russia, who do not want to be involved in a armed conflict or war, and who should not be, we keep them in our thoughts and prayers in this difficult time. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. And that word liberty in the Pledge of Allegiance certainly means a lot on a day like today. Okay, do we have notice?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Proof of publication.
Motion moved.
All favor, all opposed? Okay, we've, motion received and filed. Swearing in?
Yes. Would anyone who wishes to testify at today's hearing please rise to be sworn in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I get the maker and second are on the proof of publication, please?
Okay. The maker was Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Vice Weiss. Thank you. All right. I understand we have a few changes to the agenda. Mr. Rutter?
Just one, Mayor. Thank you. The county administrator had sent you an email seeking ratification on our new fire chief, and she is right behind me.
Mr. Rutter, you look different.
Good morning, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to add this on. I want to, first of all, congratulate the current Chief, Reginald Duren, on being appointed as our next Assistant County Administrator. He has definitely proven himself during the time that he's been here. We have spent a lot of time together. He has done an excellent job as the Fire Chief, Fire Administrator for Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. During this time, he's served as an outstanding leader and teammate with not only the Fire Rescue Department, but other county departments and partners. Mr. Duren led an ISO-rated Class II department with 1,700 employees and a budget of $520 million that serve a population of 920,000. He works very well with all of the other Fire Chiefs. He was named the Fire Chief of the Year. And again, he not only worked with them, but he worked with our partners, the Healthcare Taxing District, along with the Health Department. When I needed someone to assist with vaccinations, even with homebound testing, he stepped up to the plate. Yes, I will do it. And he worked with the other cities. When the other cities could not perform those functions, he made arrangements for our Fire Department to handle those particular situations. So he has a knack of working very well with others. And I did send out a memo to you telling you that pretty much Fire Rescue, he will continue to work with Fire Rescue as the Administrator, so will I. And then also Community Service, Equal Opportunity, Medical Examiner, Human Resources, Purchasing, Risk Management, and the Health Department. And as a result of moving Chief Duren, we needed to make sure we had another very capable and high standard performing leader. And that leader, because I've been working with him as well, is Assistant Fire Chief Kennedy. This board has to ratify any department head that I select. I've selected him. He has worked with us over the past 26 years. He has guaranteed us a number of years to grow with him, so he will not be leaving us anytime soon. And he has a tremendously high level of respect and positive relationships with our Palm Beach County Fire Rescue staff, as well as our union. He has the ability to encourage and motivate personnel, both sworn and civilian. He has garnered the praise of those in the surrounding Fire Rescue agencies, as well as the 19 cities we serve. So he is poised to continue to lead Fire Rescue in the appropriate way, and I am this morning asking the board to ratify this appointment.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Administrator. I'm looking for a motion to ratify the appointment to Chief of Mr. Kennedy. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? Show that as a unanimous approval.
Mr. Mayor, I had my light on for that item. I just, I'm, congratulations, Chief Duren, and congratulations to Chief Kennedy. I just wanted to put on the record that while I'm excited about these appointments, I am a little bit disappointed. It was my understanding that prior to these appointments being made, there would be a very thorough conversation with IAFF Local 2928, and it's my understanding that that may not have occurred. And I would hope, moving forward in situations like this again in the future, that we have better, more thoughtful, thorough conversations with our local union when it comes to the Administrator and the Chief over their department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I am not aware, I wasn't aware that I was supposed to have an in-depth conversation with Fire Rescue. I did reach out to the President before I actually made it a known factor that that was the case. He did not have any concerns with that issue. Had he had concerns with that issue, I would have taken a different tactic to it. But I was not aware, I think, that in the past, when we've gone out, we've had a representative on the selection committee. But we have not necessarily had pre-discussions with the Fire Union on who we were going to select.
I appreciate your comments. I'm just providing feedback that I received in my office.
I will follow up with the, with the union. It was not to slight them in any way, so I will follow up with them on this particular issue.
Thank you, County Administrator. Just for clarification, the reporting relationship with the new chief is going to be the same as before, directly to you?
Yes. We'll show them, but yes, the Chief Duren will still be working in that regard. He'll still be a part of it, just like our former Assistant County Administrator remained in the pipeline, because they're the people that work with them on a very, very close day-to-day operation.
And Chief Kennedy? His reporting relationship is to?
He'll be reporting to both of us.
Okay. All right, very good. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Madam Administrator, because I have worked with Chief Duren in a number of instances outside of the COVID pandemic, which concerned placement of certain fire stations in my growing district. And he was always very professional and made himself very available. So I look forward to having him even closer geographically, so that we can continue this discussion. I'm sure that the incoming Chief Kennedy will, will be the same. And I'd like to have transparency in our proceedings. If we could have the name of the person from the union who had concern over this, I wonder if we could, Mayor, make that a matter of record rather than not.
Commissioner McKinley?
I'd prefer not to, and there's no requirement for me to do so. Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley would prefer to keep that conversation between herself and the person who reached out to her?
I would prefer, next time, if we have an allegation made, Mr. Mayor, during your tenure as mayor, of somebody who made a conversation to one of us, that it be made public, so that this is in our spirit of transparency, from which this commission is highly noted for. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Sacks, I understand your concerns, but I think we each, as members of this board, receive conversations that people feel that is information we need, and may not necessarily feel that they want to be brought forward and identified. I think we need to have each one of us make a decision. Obviously, when we're in a quasi-judicial situation, we have a legal obligation to disclose. But I think Commissioner McKinley is certainly within her rights to want to keep that information confidential.
So if I could just make for the record that whoever contacted a Commissioner's office, that that person or persons has requested that it be made anonymous or private, confidential, and not known to the public.
Your comments are noted.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. And despite the other issues being discussed here today, I'm delighted and excited to have Chief Duren be promoted to a position of greater authority and influence, and to see an incredible candidate in Chief Kennedy be promoted over this incredible Fire Department, Fire Rescue service. So with that, with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to give a round of applause and a standing ovation.
Absolutely, Commissioner Kerner. I would give you that. Congratulations to both gentlemen, and thank you very much, County Commissioner, County Administrator.
Want to hear from the new Fire Administrator? Kennedy?
Yeah.
Our new Fire Administrator, Kennedy, would you please come to the podium and share with the board your vision?
Mr. Mayor, while he is working there, I like, walking there, I'd like to recognize that we have former Fire Chief Gerald in the audience with us today. It's good to see him back.
Thank you. Chief, you are recognized.
Good morning. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. I've written a few words, so they're not, so I'm not lost in the moment. Thank you for your trust and faith in me. I will strive every day to do my very best for this great county. It is my honor and privilege to accept this position and lead the very best all hazards Fire Department. The very best. The firefighters and all the men and women in our organization are committed to excellence. They've shown that day in and day out, and that will not stop, that will only continue. There is no limit to their commitment. I thank them for their support and unwavering dedication. I have so many people to thank inside and outside Fire Rescue for their impact on my career and my life path. They are truly supporters. Chief Duren, you have led us through some of the most difficult times this organization has ever seen. We are eternally grateful for your leadership, mentoring, and guidance. Thank you. Thank you to Local 2928 for supporting me and for your progressive commitment to our department and our membership. Thank you for being here today. I would also like to recognize my family. Steady and silent, but always there. A little bit too close at this moment, but thank you. Didn't see you coming up. Thank you for always being there for me and for being here today. Lastly, be assured, the executive staff behind me is focused on the people who make up our organization. The community we serve, and we know we have more work to do, and we are ready. Again, thank you for this tremendous opportunity. Excellence today, improving tomorrow, is your Fire Rescue organization.
Thank you very much. This is good news. It's good to have bent strength, so that Chief Duren was able to move into his next role as Assistant County Administrator. We look forward to working with you. I know the, the seven of us will be having more relationships with you going forward. And certainly, Chief Kennedy, we are looking forward to you as our new chief. Okay, let's get back to our regular agenda. I want to make sure that we have everything covered. We did the amendments to the agenda, but we didn't adopt the agenda.
We did a portion of the amendments.
Let's make sure we get that all cleaned up.
Yes, so on our amendments to the agenda that we have, item number five, DOA 2021 418, Sherbrooke Estates, the applicant requested a postponement to April 28th, 2022. No motion is necessary. Item number 10, workforce housing policy issues, staff is recommending a postponement to March 29th, 2022. On our consent agenda, we are requesting that item number four, which is on regular, the DEV 2022 270 Laurel Oaks cottages be moved to the consent agenda. On E1, which is zoning applications for HSC West Palm Beach, we have a correction to reference our legal ad. We have two amendments to landscape conditions on there. We also, I need to read in, an all petition condition number one of Exhibit C4 on page 22, the site plan reference is incorrect and should be December 13th, 2021, rather than September 27th. Item number two, we also have a landscaping modification condition on the ad delete. And then another item, I have to read into the record for item number three, Exhibit C, all petition number one, that's found on page five, refers again to a site plan that's incorrect. It should state June 20th, 2016, and not January 3rd. And that is all of the amendments.
Okay. I have Commissioner Kerner, who has made a motion to accept the amendments. I have Vice Mayor Weiss seconding. All in favor? All opposed? Show unanimously approved. You've made our life a lot easier today. I think this will fly through. All right, we're going to get to the motion to adopt the agenda. All, all in favor? Oh, I guess I need a motion to do that. Okay, Vice Mayor Weiss has made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Marino. All in favor? All opposed? Our agenda is approved. All right, now, let's move on to motion.
Mayor Weinroth, before you move off that, have we probably needed to do disclosures on the consent agenda?
I guess we probably need to do that, too. Well, thank you very much for keeping me on the straight and narrow. Commissioner Kerner?
I apologize for interrupting, but I don't recall if we actually, if, if they actually swore the speakers in.
Our attorney did take care of it. Right, Mr., Mr. Attorney? Okay. All right, let's do disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Sacks. On the consent agenda, item one, two, three, or four, do you have any items?
None.
Okay, none. Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Kerner?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Commissioner Marino?
None, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. On item number two, my staff had a phone conversation with Josh Nichols.
I guess you're the only one who's doing any work. My office, we had no disclosures to make. Okay, so just for the record, we have the consent agenda items. I think I moved them both. That was moved by whom? Let me just, did you get a, did we do a vote on the consent agenda yet? No. Okay, fine. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move it.
Okay. Commissioner Marino has made the motion, and Vice Mayor Weiss has made the second. All in favor of the consent agenda being approved? Before I do that, do we have a comment cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? It approved, seven to zero. Okay.
So that will actually bring us to page seven of the agenda, then. Under the ULDC amendments for initiation of the ULDC 2022, staff has provided backup summary of what were our goals are to work on this year. Would you like a summary of that?
I'm going to let the Commissioners, I have one light on, so let me see what Commissioner McKinley would like to hear.
Yeah, you know, I was hoping to escape my time on the county commission without having any golf course conversions in my district, but thanks to redrawing the lines, I finally got one. I appreciate that the applicant has requested a postponement. It's for a very good reason. They would like a little more time to sit down and meet with the affected residents in these communities. So if there is a motion that's needed to make a motion to postpone, I'll make the motion to postpone.
On Sherborn?
Until April 28th.
Yeah, no motion needed.
Yeah, we're good on that one.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in reference to, the question was in reference to L6. If we wanted a presentation, I personally don't need one.
Okay.
If there's any member, then please.
Yeah, just for the public's information, we are all updated on this by staff prior to the meeting, so we certainly have asked our questions ahead of time. Commissioner Kern, are you making a motion?
Yes, I'll move for approval, L6, ULDC amendments, revisions 2022.
Okay. Commissioner McKinley, you want to go ahead and make a second? Okay, we got a second.
Apologies for being on the wrong item.
That's fine. I'm a little confused up here sometimes, too. All in favor? All opposed? Show that we have now approved L6. Okay.
Okay. The next item under, on page eight, under Other Items, is with Jeremy McBrien, our County Water Resource Manager, so we will turn it over to him.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes, I think we've, we've discussed this a number of times, and I'd like to go ahead and move item M7 for approval.
Okay, M7's been moved. I have Commissioner Sacks making a second. Does anybody see a need for further clarification by Jeremy? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Jeremy, your job is done. Seven to zero. Thank you. I said we'd be out of here early today.
Page nine of the agenda, item number eight, is the Special Secondary Service ALS Provider, and Stephanie Sinoh, sorry, Public Safety Director, will present on that one.
All right, we have had conversations about this. As we know, this was a change in the ordinance to allow that they wouldn't have to have an audit, so that they could be approved with a reviewed. Is that, Stephanie, basically what we're looking at? Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note of appreciation to the Department of Public Safety under Stephanie's leadership and Todd Bonlaren. This was an issue that existed specifically, I think, in Commissioner Marino's district, but it exists countywide, and so I'm delighted that we were able to get this ordinance changed and amended in such efficient manner. So having said that, my thanks to you, Stephanie, and I'll move item eight for approval.
Commissioner Kerner, we have your motion to approve. Commissioner Marino has made a second. All in favor? All opposed? That is approved, seven to zero. Stephanie, thank you for your hard work. Okay, let's move on. Administration, D9. This is an area that's near and dear to my heart.
May I?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, so Stephanie Shanahaw, Director of Public Safety. With me today is Mary Blakeney, Director of Emergency Management, and Todd Bonlaren, Assistant County Administrator. So the purpose of today's item is a follow-up to the April 2021 Board of County Commissioners meeting zoning public hearing discussion, where staff was provided general information regarding requirements for generators and transfer switches at gas stations in Palm Beach County. At that meeting, the board directed staff to pursue additional research and determine the following. Which gas stations are located on an interstate highway, state federally designated evacuation route? Which gas stations have a transfer switch or generator in Palm Beach County? Is the state actually enforcing Florida Statute 526.143? Should transfer switches be a minimum requirement? And if gas stations not on a designated evacuation route are required to install a transfer switch or a generator, what should the criteria be and the timeline for installation? And then lastly, what costs benefits of requiring mandatory transfer switches or generators at gas stations? So as a basis for our discussion, the Florida statutes require that gas stations be pre-wired with a transfer switch capable of operating all fuel pumps, dispensing equipment, life safety systems, and payment equipment using an alternate power source. If they meet all of the four following requirements, however, a permanent generator is not required. The first is the gas station is located in a county population with 300,000 or more, which in our case, we have a population way more than that. Number two is gas stations was newly constructed, newly, if a gas station was newly constructed or substantially renovated on or after July 1st, 2006. Three, if gas station is located within a half a mile proximate to an interstate highway or state or federally designated evacuation route. And last, a gas station has 16 normal fueling positions, which is equivalent to eight pumps. So it has to meet all four of those requirements in order to require a transfer switch. So staff worked with the Florida Department of Ag and Consumer Services for a list of all gas stations located in Palm Beach County. The chart in this slide shows the total number of gas stations by type, and whether they are located within a half a mile of an evacuation route or not. Of the 395 gas stations from the list provided by the Florida Department of Ag, 278 are fully dependent on commercial power, 82 have a transfer switch, and 35 have generators. Of the 296 that are located within a half a mile of an evacuation route, 212 are on commercial power, 59 have a transfer switch, and 25 have generators. Staff confirmed that the Florida Department of Ag and Consumer Services verifies at the time of visit whether a transfer switch is required based on the criteria and the statute mentioned in the previous slide. Staff reviewed the list provided by the state of the 212 gas stations on commercial power that are located within a half a mile of a designated evacuation route, and found they were all in compliance with the statute and do not require a transfer switch at this time, because they did not have at least 16 fueling positions, or they were not newly constructed or substantially renovated on or after July 1st of 2006. So basically, the state is doing what they need to do. Using the same information from the previous slide, here's a look at gas stations by type on a map, and there's also a larger map in the back of your packet. The map on the left in this slide shows there are 25 gas stations with generators, those are the green dots, and 59 gas stations with a transfer switch, yellow dot, that are located within a half a mile of a designated evacuation route, which is the gray buffer. The second map in this slide shows all of the 395 gas stations, broken down by type, which is also, which also includes those on commercial power. So are additional requirements needed? Based on our research of what other surrounding counties are doing as it relates to transfer switches and generators, only Miami-Dade has created additional regulations requiring that they provide an annual emergency management plan, ensuring they have access to generators as required. Pursuant to Florida Statute 526.143, any company owning 10 or more gas stations in a county is required to maintain at least one portable generator capable of providing an alternate generated power source for every 10 gas stations. Each portable generator must be stored within this state and must be available for use in an affected location within 24 hours after a disaster. The estimated cost to install a permanent generator could be a minimum of $50,000, and to install a transfer switch could range from $5,000 to $20,000. Some benefits of installing a transfer switch or generator could be, it would provide the gas station the ability to connect a backup generator, if available, to power a gas station and/or continue the business operations and sales following a major storm. But without a transfer switch, hooking up a generator is not possible. If desired by the BCC to add requirements to gas stations, some options to consider could be the following. One, require a generator to any new gas station with 16 or more fueling positions. In some backup information, since 2010, there were a total of 27 new gas stations built countywide, which included 12 with 16 or more fueling positions. Another option could be to require a transfer switch only to all existing gas stations with 16 or more fueling positions within a certain timeframe to install, for example, five years. Currently, this would impact 14 of the 278 gas stations on commercial power, with only one of those being in unincorporated Palm Beach County. These suggested options would reduce the impact to the smaller gas stations, or we could simply do nothing. If there are any additional requirements made, staff would suggest for unincorporated only and allow municipalities to opt in. There are various options to look at, and we've outlined several considerations in the previous slide. At this- At this point, staff is requesting direction on if any additional requirements are going to be considered, and if so, what should those look like. Here are a few areas of suggestion for your discussion. I can also refer back to the previous slide if that's easier. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and since I was the one who initiated this, let me start the conversation. Is this a solution for which there's really no problem, or are we in a situation where in an emergency, our residents are going to be finding it difficult to get fuel for their vehicles?
So, you know, that's a loaded question. Sometimes it's, you know, what is enough, and we don't have that answer. I do know that the information that I provide, and if, Mary, you can go back to the slide and slide four, right now, with the transfer switches and the generators, we have 82 transfer switches. So that gives 82 gas stations the ability to hook up to a generator. Without a transfer switch, they can't. However, that 82 is, you know, a high number, and with that, as I mentioned before, the statute also requires that any company that has 10 or more gas stations has to have a generator for each 10. So that's another, you know, opportunity to hook up to a generator. And then we have the 35 gas stations that are already equipped with a generator. One thing, again, in a perfect world, obviously, having, you know, abundant of resources is always something that, you know, everyone wants, whether it's a disaster or not. But I think when it comes to emergency management, you know, our role is the messaging, and I think that's really what we need to focus on from our end is, you know, we need to stop the hoarding of gas when there is a disaster. We need to make sure that, you know, people fill up their tanks and, you know, maybe something for their generator at home, but at the end of the day, we need to leave that fuel in those stations to our emergency workers. And that's kind of where our focus is from a messaging from emergency management.
I know, but you know that's not going to happen. People hoard toilet paper, and they hoard gas and bread. I don't know why bread, but, you know, all of a sudden, the emergency comes and people are buying bread. So do you see, and understand, policy's here, and you're just giving us facts, but do you see the solution, at least at this point in time, to look at newly constructed rather than trying to retrofit? Because obviously, I don't want to burden with expenses, you're saying, about $20,000 for a transfer switch, $50,000 for a generator. That's a heavy price, so not with saying the fact we have to make the decision. Would you see that as a course that might make sense going forward?
I think moving forward, if that is a direction, I would like to reach out to the industry to see what their feedback is, so we can make a collective decision. At this point, we have not gone that route because we have not received direction yet on which route the board wants to go. But I think that, you know, involving them, you know, would be, I think, a part of this process moving forward.
Very good. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate it, Mayor Weinroth. Couple of questions, two in particular. This is a Florida statute since 2006. Did they put some money behind it in the budget for, and I think Todd Bonlaren is not here, oh, there he is. Gosh, Todd. It's right through you, oh my goodness. So nice to have no mandatory mask. But do we have any money behind this requirement since 2006 for these generators to be in place?
So according to Mr. Bonlaren?
No, we have none?
We have not funded any at the state level.
Has a state funded, and this to you, Mr. Bonlaren, has a state funded any counties pursuant to this mandate to have these generators in place for populations over 300,000?
Yeah, I'm not aware. I am not aware, Commissioner, of state funding that's been provided for generators at this point. We can do a little additional research and get that back to you.
Yes, I wonder if you-
There could have been some one-offs that, you know, the state might have allocated, you know, for certain areas, but I don't know that they've generally done that at all.
During the, I wonder if you could, Mr. Bonlaren, because during the hurricanes, I know we had funding behind generators at certain, you know, nursing homes and assisted living places that were mandated, and there was money behind that. So I'm just wondering if, in fact, there was money set aside for these generators, since it is a requirement, and it came during that period of time of multitude of hurricanes. The second question I have is probably really towards staff, and that is, is it, we're going to put these in unincorporated, we're going to require these generators only in the unincorporated areas of the county, then we're going to allow cities to opt in?
So this is a recommendation for consideration. We have not proposed any one way or the other. What I did say is that if you were to put in additional requirements for gas stations, one of the options was generators at new gas stations, and the other option was transfer switches at existing, but it sounds like your focus was more on the first one. And if you were to put any additional requirements as far as a new generator at a new gas station, we would recommend unincorporated and allow municipalities to opt in.
And that is why? Why do you suggest, why does staff suggest that we don't have any of these generators available by requirement of the county in cities, or incorporated in municipalities?
So typically, this type of change or law would fall under the ULDC, and the ULDC is unincorporated.
But this is a state law. I would imagine that it would, and I know we have an attorney over here, a very bright guy on my right, that it would be a requirement for anything, any municipality of over 300,000, I would imagine a state law would apply to everyone in the county that meets that requirement.
So if I could just clarify, so the state law already requires any generator or any gas station within $300,000, 300,000 population or more, 16 or more fueling positions, and located within a half a mile of an interstate, of an evacuation route, either federal, state, or local. So that requirement is already at the state level and it's countywide. What the considerations for today's meeting were to require any new gas station in Palm Beach County with a generator, and it would be applied to only unincorporated. So the state law is countywide. If requested by the board, our change would only be unincorporated. The state law is already in effect. This would not impact, this is in addition to the state law.
Okay. And why, give me your basis for suggesting that we don't require new gas stations in municipalities to have this generator?
Typically, when we start out with any ordinance, I mean, and at least in the ones for public safety, they've always been unincorporated, and we allow the municipalities to opt in, just based on my experience.
So this is, so your suggestion is based on experience, but do you have any definitive reasons why we would not let, not require municipalities to also have these generators, other than we've always done it this way?
Well, if I may, I think that, you know, just like I mentioned earlier, we always want to have a buy-in from everyone, and I think that with the industry being involved in this conversation, I think the municipalities could be involved in this conversation. It's certainly something that we could go to the League of Cities if, again, we're given direction to talk about and get direction from the League on what their position is. But mandating municipalities to opt in, I don't know if we have any law that requires that. I know we work very close with our municipalities, and we try to get their buy-in.
I just find it suspect that we're going to make a requirement, and of course, who bears the cost of these generators?
The gas stations.
Exactly. I find it, other than just saying we've always done it this way, and we haven't yet spoken to the League of Cities, I think that we possibly need to bring in that conversation with the League of Cities in fairness, so that we have a requirement of this amount of money that would be applied to every gas station and every private entity in the county.
Commissioner Sacks, would you yield for a moment to Mr. Rutter? I think he has some input.
Sure. Oh, I didn't see him. He's- That's okay.
Okay, hey, we should be, go ahead.
If I could provide a little clarity on this, Commissioner, and for the board's knowledge, the water conservation ordinance, for instance, that we just saw, we had reached out to and worked with the League of Cities initially. Water Management District was encouraging us to do this as a countywide ordinance. We've engaged in a number of other ordinances, to the point of doing something like this on a countywide basis versus doing it for unincorporated, but engaging the League of Cities, letting them know where we're going and making them aware of it. We can absolutely do that with the board's direction. I think, though, if, as we pursue it, we would like, we can control, which would be the ULDC if the board directed us to do that, but we can absolutely reach out to cities, make them aware, and let them know about the work that we're doing, which would be very consistent with what we've been doing and had a pretty good degree of success doing these past few years.
I may, Mayor. I think that's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Rutter, and I think that, especially since our evacuation routes are around I-95 and the Turnpike, that this issue needs to be discussed further with the League of Cities to see if they would also want to opt into this. I just don't see any reason, definitive analysis of why it would only pertain to certain areas of the county, certain private entities, gas stations, to have this type of required cost, and would not also apply to gas stations privately owned in municipalities or other areas.
Commissioner Sacks, I see Mr. Radcliffe has arrived, and I'm sure he will have some input as far as the municipalities. Mr. Radcliffe, I don't know if you were following the conversation. We're talking about gas station generators and potentially transfer switches. We're looking at the ULDC, potentially looking at unincorporated areas for some revisions to our ordinances requiring that there be either transfer switches and/or generators in gas stations that have over 16 pumps near evacuation routes about a half a mile. Commissioner Sacks has raised the issue of the municipalities being brought into this conversation, and Stephanie has felt that, and I think many of us up here feel, that this is something we need to work through the League of Cities and the municipalities before we just say this is the way it's going to be. Would you like to opine?
Yes, that's good. Last time this was discussed, we had talked about it, and you asked me to get all the information, and we got all, you know, we went and we got all the information, and along the way, Stephanie and your department figured out there was a way to track these, and they followed through with state, so we've got really good numbers now. So I think that, I think the idea of working together, and the legal would love to do this because we want to, we've all been there, we all know, we've been on the phone calls, we spent the hours at the EOC together, so I think it's very, very important to do that, and I appreciate you giving us that opportunity because we've done it so successfully with the ARPA money, is an example, where all that and all the other counties were fighting over money. We were working together, setting up business opportunities, you know, loans, rental, everything together, so we encourage that. We look at our relationship as a model. In the state, we think we have one of the best EOC models, and I think that just we'll continue with that.
Before I get to Commissioner McKinley, just to give you further information, I think Stephanie identified 14 gas stations where this would be applicable. 13 of those would be in unincorporated areas, so we certainly would look for a partnership with our municipalities on this. Stephanie?
So if I could clarify, that was, as it relates to number two, so number one is for new gas stations, so the 14 is existing gas stations. And if you were to require a transfer switch on those existing gas stations, there's only 14 that have 16 or more fueling positions. So that just applies to the transfer switch.
Very good. Commissioner McKinley, I've held you off long enough.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, how many counties in the state of Florida have additional requirements?
Based on our research, none, other than what I mentioned in the presentation with Miami-Dade for a plan.
I appreciate your research and your presentation today. I don't think we need to take any further action on this. I think, number one, pressing it down, forcing it upon the cities is what we actually fight against, the state doing that to us. That's called a preemption, and I wouldn't support preempting our cities. But I think that this is a problem that doesn't exist, and I think it opens ourselves up for a preemption at the state level, and I don't think that we need to move forward on making any more stringent requirements in Palm Beach County when 66 other counties haven't seen the need to do this. So I appreciate your research, and I don't support moving forward on any other further action on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Weiss, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
That's all right. I support Commissioner McKinley's position. I think that it, I have the same feeling about this, that based on the data, and I appreciate you all getting the information, that 25%, over 25% of the gas stations now either have generators or have transfer switches in Palm Beach County. And I think the bigger issue typically that I see, or I think we all see, is when we do have these emergencies, is being able to get the fuel to the gas stations so that they can distribute it out, and that seems to be a more challenging issue. It's not anything that we all have control over. I know the state has the ability at times through their emergency procedures to direct fuel to certain areas, but I think we've got, based on the numbers you're showing us, that we do have, you know, obviously, it's not 100%, but, you know, you have over 25% of your gas stations, provided they, some of them can get the generators needed, that will be, could be operational during an emergency.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. You are excellent, and I appreciate what you said, because this is my concern. I'm going to vote for this. We don't need to get perfect, we just need to get as good as we can. And that's because the evacuation routes are mostly through municipalities. And to have someone not be able to get gas because of the generator not having to be there, I think is, could be a disservice. But now that I know that our League of Cities is going to work very closely with you, Stephanie, and getting, making sure that we have gas stations that are close to those evacuation areas would be very, very important. That, to me, is my concern. My second concern, of course, is the cost. We're going to tell people, if you want to put a gas station in unincorporated, it's going to cost you this amount of money more because you need a mandatory, you need to have this generator or this transfer switch. And I think that there is a bit of inequality in that, but other than that, I think this is a very good idea. I think we need to move forward on it, and whatever we can do to move it forward, I'm with it. Thank you for your research.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. All right, I see no further lights. I think we are sort of, no one is looking, okay, Commissioner Bernard?
I support Commissioner McKinley on this item. I think that the state has come up with a rule that we can live with, and so I don't think that we need, I don't think we need to do anything for right now.
Okay, and Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor Weinroth. Just from a practical perspective, if you look at the authorities delineated in our charter, we only have countywide authority on very specific items such as countywide law enforcement issues, county-owned beaches, impact fees, county library services, and wellfields. So, you know, what we would be doing up here is basically giving an advisory opinion to the municipalities to say you can opt into this ordinance that we can't require be applied in the municipalities, and so they can do that on their own. They don't need our leadership on that or our direction. If they want to create a municipal ordinance within their jurisdiction, they're certainly permitted to do that. So given the practical effects of what this direction of this board may be, if we move forward on it, I think it's without legal effect, and to, you know, tie up staff resources and commissioner resources for a symbolic gesture is not something that I can support at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner, and I think that this is going to be a- And I, I think that this is going to be allowed to sit for a while longer. I don't think there's going to be any direction. I personally will probably, when another application comes before us for a new station, be looking forward to requesting that that be part of our approval process. But I think, for the reasons that have been set up here, not the least of which is cost, that I think at this point, we are not going to fix a problem that maybe is not that much of a problem. So unless I see anything else, we'll let this item be closed for the, right now. No, no further direction. We're at, the, the, this, this topic ran out of gas. And on that note, we're going to move on. C-10 was taken off of our agenda. Executive Director, yes?
Mayor, good morning. I'm going to jump in here really quickly. Two points. One was, just to go back to C-10 quickly, it was on your ad slate, and wanted to clarify for those who may be watching, a discussion on this will take place at the, on the Workhorse Housing will take place at our March workshop with the board, two bonds that the board is asking us to bring back. So I'll bring my portion of that back for discussion as well. We did get notices out to interested parties, a lot of information out there, but just wanted to clarify as publicly as possible. Then, almost more importantly, today is really it. This is Bob's last meeting.
This is it? I was wondering what you're doing down there, Mr. Banks.
The county attorney gave an excellent and very eloquent goodbye at our last meeting, but we wanted to take a second because Bob is just such a planning, zoning, building-centric person, and wanted to take a moment.
Such a fixture in this room.
Fixure, he's a cornerstone, we could go on with adjectives for quite a while. But we really want to take just a moment to, to thank him, and I appreciate the board's indulgence for just a second. Bob's been such, I look at Lisa, myself, I've known Bob for over 19 years, Lisa longer, Wendy for a long time. There are people, Brian in the back, for, we go decades, there's so many people who've worked with Bob, argued with Bob, sometimes we win, a lot of times we lose, go to lunch with Bob, that's a very important aspect of life. So many good things and so many great stories. He's not just a tremendous attorney and counsel, but I think just counselor and advisor to us. We always talk about Planner Bob and Attorney Bob, and we need to find that spot somewhere in between, but I think that's what makes him great. He understands all the different parts of the world and has been so helpful and just so, I really have to say, unique and given such great value to Palm Beach County through his many years of service here. So with that, we are going to thank him for his many, many years of service, me personally, on behalf of so many of us that have worked with you for years. We appreciate everything, we will remember everything, we will try and forget the things he told us we couldn't do, but somewhere in between, we will miss you a lot. Scott, Darren, you've got big shoes to fill. Been working with you now, look forward to working more, hope you've learned a lot from Bob. You've got big shoes to fill. With that, Mayor, we do have a short video with the board's indulgence. We'd like to play a little video retrospective of Bob's time.
On behalf of Ramsey and I and the whole PCB department, we just want to thank you for all of your years of service. I think he's seen seven executive directors come through PCB. You've been there to advise them all, all of us, and I appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. And we wanted to recognize you with this plaque and just honor you and maybe take a picture with you. Thank you, Bob. I want you guys in the picture. Thank you, guys. Good, good. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Bob. Thank you, guys. And I just want to say, those pictures were taken at the, a lot of zoning and planning holiday parties through the years, so that seemed to have a theme there with those photographs with Bob. It looks kind of like PCB was one long party, but it has been, and I appreciate you, Bob, and I'm going to miss you terribly. Since 1995, you have been my mentor, and I am going to use the phrase, what would Bob do for the rest of my days with the county? Thank you.
Bob, it's your turn.
Well, I'll keep this short because I already spoke to the board about my retirement a week ago, but as you can see from those slides, I've always thought the most important thing at work was going to lunch. I have a lot of friends that I, you know, developed, working with PCB all these years, so just again, to thank the board for their support all these years, and it's been a good ride. And I spent my, most of my adult life in working for Palm Beach County, I'm really glad I did, so thanks.
Well, we certainly will miss you, Bob. Thank you. Okay. Now that we've had our celebrations, let's see, do we have any further conversation from the Assistant County Administrator? Nothing? Okay, good. All right. Commissioners, it's your turn. We'll start with Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, my heart and prayers go out to the people in Ukraine and the surrounding areas for what's, what's proceeding. I have, and I just hope that one day we can wake up and have peace and not have to see this type of aggression. So I hope everybody has a wonderful weekend coming up, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, two comments. The first one, you know, about two, before the pandemic hit, we had a meeting with a group of homeowners in the acreage regarding the parking of tractor trailers in that area. They had asked that staff go back and take a look at it. I'd like to give staff direction that they come back with some information on how we might be able to accommodate that, or what the effect of trying to accommodate that would be on other areas of the county. Like if we pass a change like that, it can affect other areas. So if we could give staff direction and come back with a little bit of research on that issue, I know the acreage residents on both sides of that issue would appreciate it if we could decide how to move forward.
Without objection.
My second comment is, I just want to thank Commissioner Kerner for recognizing the injured deputy in Taylor County. I'm sure all of us had our blue alerts go off the other night. I aligned them off at 11:30 in the morning, I mean, 11:30 PM, and then again, just after 1 AM. And I know, I believe that both, actually three of you, Commissioner Sacks, Commissioner Bernard, and Commissioner Kerner, were probably in the legislature at some point when the blue alert was passed into law. So thank you for recognizing our injured friend up in the panhandle of Florida, and just want to acknowledge that the person who shot him was a very violent convicted sexual predator who had raped a minor. And that gentleman is no longer alive thanks to a good instance of Florida Stand Your Ground law. They tried to break into a home in Dixie County and in the middle of the night, and the homeowner took care of that situation. So Commissioner Kerner, thank you for making that moment of silence.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. First, I'd like to request board approval for an off-site proclamation to honor Jupiter Mayor Todd Wodraska for his 18 years of service to the town.
Okay, I have a second by Vice Mayor, second, and all in favor, all opposed, it's passed unanimously?
Thank you. Second, I would like to take a moment to remember Sandy Folen, who passed away recently. She was the co-founder and former CEO of Barron Sign Manufacturing, which is located in Riviera Beach. She worked tirelessly with the county, and one of those things she did was obtain a HUD Section 108 loan. And Barron Signs was the first business to locate in this Riviera Beach redevelopment area. They had a 40,000 square foot plant. And by doing that, she actually brought, she was the catalyst for several other businesses to locate in the area. Her company was in existence for 40 years, and her client roster included Orlando, Palm Beach, Fort Lauderdale, Elports, University of Miami. But, you know, Sandy, also, her company received minority certification from the federal and Florida governments, and was a lead employer of persons with low and moderate income. And additionally, she actually mentored these, a lot of these small businesses. And she was also very active in the community as past president of the Business Development Board and serving on those, several local chambers of commerce. She received the Governor's Business Leadership Award and the Northern Palm Beach Chamber of Commerce Award for Entrepreneur of the Year. And Sandy was a dear friend, and I hope you will just keep her family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you didn't mention something's going on in your district this weekend.
Oh, heavens, oh my gosh. Well, you know, you can see my badge, the Honda Classic, and I'll, you know what, now that you said that, I'm wearing a purple pin for Tim Rosafort. I was able to give his family the proclamation this week, and so we're kicking off the Honda Classic, and I do hope that all of you will support this huge economic driver for the community. And not only is it an economic driver for the community, it is, last year they donated $5,000 to our local charities because every PGA Tour event is a nonprofit event. So any money you spend out there actually does come back to the community. So please go out to the Honda Classic, it is at PGA National in Palm Beach Gardens, and I'll see you there, as will, as will several thousands of other people. Thank you.
I will see you up there on Saturday. Vice Mayor Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First is, on behalf of the mayor, I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring March 7, 2022, as the 17th anniversary of the Jewish Education Center of South Florida.
Thank you. That's been seconded by the Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? That's approved unanimously?
And then a couple other points. One is, I just want to follow up with our Assistant County Administrator on two items. One, we made a request a while ago regarding simplification of the ULDC, the code, trying to look at simplification there. And the other request was regarding having staff look at appropriate locations where additional density may make sense, and wondering if you might either be able to give us an update or...
Certainly, we've had a conversation in your topic number one with our new-ish zoning director. She's not new, but she's still months into the job. Actually, if you don't mind, let me take a step back, I'll get you a written response for the board, tell you where they both are, so I can talk to staff and get you some timelines on both those points, on your second one, on the additional density, tell you that we have been doing a number of things, and I probably need to provide you a little more background on what has been done to date. And I would tell you as well that that workforce housing discussion that we had could further precipitate some of those points, but I'll get you something more detailed.
All right. And then lastly, had the opportunity to join the mayor and folks from the TPA, who went down to Safe Street Summit down in Miami. And, you know, as we know, I mean, we are a vision zero county. However, you know, accidents do occur, but there, there are a number of preventable accidents that happen in Palm Beach County, and those tend to have to do with the trains. And I'm just imploring our residents, when those arms go down, please, please obey them. You know, I liken it to, if a red light goes on, people, I mean, obviously people at times will run red lights, but we stop and we wait, and we wait for the light to go green. And the same is true for those arms. And unfortunately, people are in a rush, and they don't obey those, those arms, and people are, have been seriously injured, some have been killed, and it is preventable. And just remember, just because a train goes by doesn't mean there's not another one following it. And that's, you know, we saw that situation about a week and a half ago, where a train went by, the person got impatient, went around the arms, and there was another train coming the other way. And so, anyways, so let's all be safe out there, follow, follow good driving practices and what's expected under the law.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First comment, I hate golf courses that have been converted. That's just the bane of my existence up here, and I know, as Commissioner McKinley said, she's got the blessing of a golf course in her district now that we redistricted, and I, we are all up here very happy to see that the petition for Shearbrook Estates was pulled at least temporarily. Obviously, it was a significant headwind since our underlying board voted zero to seven in the opposition to that plan. So I, I applaud the developer and everybody involved with that for stepping back, taking a breath, and going back to the residents and seeing if there is some way that this can be worked out. That certainly demonstrates a ability to hear what the residents in that community are saying, and up here, it certainly is something that we appreciate. Jumping on the same subject as the Vice Mayor, because I tend to be the transportation geek up here, we really need to make sure that people stay safe. And, you know, trains are going to be with us for a long time. Bright Line is running upwards of 25 trains a day when they finally get going full steam. It's a great way of traveling. Many of us went down to that Safe Streets seminar down in Miami using the train. I had to drive down to Fort Lauderdale to get the train. I'm looking forward to when Boca Raton gets its own station, but people from here in West Palm Beach jumped on. It's a very convenient way if you don't bump into anybody. And that is really a problem. We are emphasizing public transportation. We're emphasizing that people need to give up their cars and get on buses and get on trains, and we want to do it safely. And it does not help that people continually disregard the gates. And if you look at these accidents, and some of them unfortunately are suicide by train, but a lot of them are just people who are just not willing to wait. And like the Vice Mayor said, in Lake Worth Beach, Bright Line released the video from the engineer's perspective, and you can watch as that car decided to go around another car that was stopped at the gate, go around the gate, and unfortunate for him, he saw a freight train going by, figured the freight had left the crossing, and didn't realize right behind that freight train coming in the opposite direction was the Bright Line. His car was cut in two. He lived, but not many people would have lived through that kind of an accident. Please, like the Vice Mayor said, we have a thing in this county called Vision Zero. It's actually nationwide. We are trying to get the number of people killed on our roadways down to nothing. And we are emphasizing complete streets where people will walk, ride their bicycles, and enjoy the, the cityscape that's being created here. But we have to be mindful of the fact that cars and trains kill people. So please, be mindful of that. We want you to be safe, especially around the trains. I just, you know, it's just unbelievable the number of times that people have made mistakes, and I would hate to be the engineer sitting in that, in that compartment, watching myself bearing down on one of those people who that, in that compartment, watching myself bearing down on one of those people who have just crossed in front of me. Because you can't stop, can't swerve out of the way. There ain't no way to stop that collision from happening. So please, please stay safe out there. And on that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.